To use social media, provided that this does not disturb the business of the meeting. I want to remind you that this meeting is being webcast live, although I have the right to suspend filming should I think need. And now I will vacate the chair for the first item on the agenda.
Right, thank you Chairman and members. Can I ask the Chief Executive, under Item 1, to announce nominations for the Chairman of the County Council, please?
Denise Turner-Stewart has nominated Mr Anthony Samuels, seconded by Chris Button.
Thank you very much. Can I call Mrs Turner-Stewart to say a few words in support of the nomination, please?
Thank you. I wish to propose Tony Samuels as Chairman of this Council for this municipal year. Tony embodies the dedication, care and commitment that we all have for and to our residents in this wonderful county of Surrey. He radiates energy and enthusiasm and is a motivational influence, especially for our young people, which I've witnessed firsthand when out on the bounce at some of the graduation ceremonies that we've given awards to. He enjoys cross-party support and conducts council meetings with balance and fairness. And perhaps that's something you could teach to the Speaker of the House of Commons? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Turner-Stewart. And Mr Button, you would like to speak, please?
Thank you Chairman, Vice Chairman.
No, don't mind Chairman, it's fine.
No, I'm sure you don't. The good governance of our Council, Madam Vice Chairman, relies on special qualities from its Chairman. A good Chairman ensures that the Council is more effective than some of its parts, ensures that debate is open, courteous and productive, and ensures that its business is conducted transparently and for the public good. A good Chairman must be formal without being pompous, good-humoured without being flippant, focused on timing without being impatient, modest but with a concealed toughness, slow to chide us when we are inarticulate, swift to remind us of the standards the public have the right to expect of us, wise enough to let us give voice to hard things, tough enough to close us down when we are importunate. These qualities most of us can find from time to time in dribs and drabs, or in uneven proportion. The Chairman must have all these qualities to hand at all times and hold them close enough to find them in difficult times. Such high standard has Tony Samuels set, as our Chairman in the previous year, and such qualities will he bring to the coming civic year. And for these reasons, I am pleased to second his nomination.
Thank you, Mr Button. So the motion is that Mr Anthony Samuels be elected Chairman of the Council for the Council Year 2019-2020. And all those in favour of Mr Samuels, please show. Nobody against him. It looks unanimous, thank you. I therefore declare that Mr Anthony Samuels is duly elected as the Chairman of the County Council.
I, Anthony David Samuels, having been elected to the office of Chairman of the County Council for the County of Surrey, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want briefly say what an honour it is to be appointed Chairman of Surrey County Council. Surrey is an amazing place and we all work very hard and do our best for our residents at all times. I've been proud to represent the county for the last eight months and look forward to serving you well in the future. Thank you for your support. So, Item 2, Apologies for Absence. Apologies have been received from Mr Beckett, Mrs Bowes, Mr Brett Warburton, Mr Carrasco, Mr Elwood, Mr Gardner, Mrs Goodwin, Miss Heath, Mrs Molesy, Mr Ramsdale and Mrs Young. Anyone else at all? Thank you. Item 3, The Minutes, on page 9 of the agenda. May I sign the minutes of the Council held on 19th March 2019 as a correct record of the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4, Declarations of Interest. Are there any declarations of interest of disclosable pecuniary, significant personal or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point? Thank you. Item 5, Chairman's Announcements. Well, welcome everybody to today's AGM. As you know, it is mayor-making time as well, and I do hope that in future the Chairman of Surrey County Council is invited to all such mayor-makings in the 11 boroughs and districts. I'd now like the opportunity to ask Council to pay respects to a former councillor who has sadly passed away, Mrs Elise Whiteley. Her funeral took place last month. Mrs Whiteley was appointed as a County Councillor for the Foxhills and Virginia Water Division in Runnymede in 1997. She served on the Council for 12 years on the Audit and Governance Committee, Health and Scrutiny Committee and Planning and Regulatory Committee. I would therefore like you all to stand in a moment of silent tribute. At this time, I would like to thank Nick Harrison for his dedication to duty during his time as Leader of the Residents' Association and Independence Group, and I've really enjoyed working with you, Nick, and I look forward to working, Nick too, Nick Darby, as his successor. Welcome, Nick. Colleagues, baseball is my favourite sport and on the 7th of July coming at 11 o'clock, I'm hosting an event at Walton Cricket Club where many people will attend commemorating the fact that baseball was first played in Walton by the Prince of Wales in 1749. I made this discovery from a newspaper cutting supplied to me by our excellent Surrey History Centre. This discovery predates the American claim to have invented baseball by 100 years, and their hierarchy were not happy when I visited them with this news last week. My friend Mike Reed, the DJ is coming along to unveil a blue plaque to commemorate this, and you are all welcome to attend. We expect a lot of people, including the American Embassy. Finally, after our next council meeting on the 9th of July, I have arranged for some young musicians from world-famous Yehudi Menuin School in Cobham to come and play for us in this chamber at 2:30pm after the council meeting. Numbers will be limited to listen to these wonderful children, so please email my office by the end of this month, 31st May, to confirm your coming, otherwise your seat will be amply taken by someone else. Item 6, Vice Chairman. I ask the Chief Executive to announce any nominations.
Mary Lewis has nominated Mrs Helen Clack, seconded by Will Forster.
Mrs Lewis, do you wish to say a few words in support of the nomination?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few months ago, I had the honour of proposing Helen Clack as the Vice Chairman of Surrey County Council. On that occasion, I told the Council that I believed that Helen would be an ideal person for the role and that she would represent us all with dignity and in an inclusive way. Since then, some of you will have seen Helen in action as Vice Chairman around the county. Many of you, like me, came to County Hall with volunteers from your divisions, who were welcomed, celebrated and thanked by Helen in just such a dignified and inclusive style as I had promised. Helen has an interest in people that is not feigned or false and a gentle sense of humour that makes everyone feel at ease. Helen has shown that she has all the skills and personal qualities that are essential to this important civic role, and I therefore have no hesitation in once more proposing Helen Clack for the position of Vice Chairman of Surrey County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Forster, do you have a few words?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'd like to second Helen Clack's nomination as Vice Chairman. Helen Clack is a well-respected and longstanding County Councillor. She has extensive experience on this Council, both as a divisional member but also a former member of the Cabinet and the Executive. As the County Councillor for Dorking Rural, she represents a larger area than the whole of my borough of Woking, and I think she has more parish councils than Woking has councillors to cope with all that and all those individuals with all those questions and difficult comments. She's clearly highly capable to achieve that. Whilst I was serving as Mayor of Woking, I was delighted to attend many events with Helen, and I saw in person her commitment, her compassion and her energy. To go from one end of Surrey to another, back again and still be able to not only breathe and rest and know where she is, but actually have a real interest in the event she's attending is a truly amazing thing. She's a real presence at civic events and a real passionate supporter of Surrey's voluntary sector, which hopefully will be key for her future role. And as a result of that, I would like to second her nomination.
Thank you, Mr Forster. So the motion is that Mrs Helen Clack be appointed Vice Chairman of Surrey County Council for the Council Year 2019-20. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's unanimous. Many congrats.
I, Helen Clack, having been elected to the office of Vice Chairman of the County Council for the County of Surrey, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I'd just like to take the opportunity of thanking members for their confidence in me. I've really enjoyed the last eight months as Vice Chairman. Working with our Chairman has been a real pleasure and I look forward to the year coming. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Helen. On to Item 7, The Leader's Statement. I call Tim Oliver, the Leader of the Council, to make his statement. May I remind you that members can make comments as well as ask questions on the Leader's statement, and the Leader may respond at the end. Leader.
Mr Chairman and Members, let me begin by congratulating Nick Darby on his election as Group Leader of the Residents' Association. I've worked with Nick over the past couple of years on the Elmbridge Local Committee and as a Member of the Investment Board, and know him to be someone who is diligent and hard-working, always putting his residents first, despite being a lawyer. Equally, having seen Nick Harrison in his first two and last two years as Leader, I have witnessed at first-hand his honest, open and appropriate challenges during that time, and I have no doubt he will continue to keep us on our toes as Chairman of the Resources Select Committee. And welcome to Nikki Barton, who returns to the chamber following the Hazelmere by-election earlier this year. Also, I'd like to welcome both new and returning leaders across district and boroughs, and I look forward to visiting each of them over the coming weeks. As you know, it is a key strategic commitment to work better with our partners across the county, coordinating and collaborating to secure better outcomes for the people we jointly serve. Therefore, while the recent elections may have resulted in changes to some of the administrations, I don't believe that this will or should delay the implementation of local partnership boards across the county, and something I mentioned in my last council speech, and indeed which we will be piloting in two boroughs later this year. These boards, with membership drawn from key stakeholder groups, are intended to transcend political control as they genuinely focus on good local place-shaping. Mr Chairman, it is imperative that we ensure our message is properly conveyed so that residents understand that this is about modernisation and a better way of delivering services, and not about cutting costs. We are dealing urgently with the finances of the Council. Sorry, we're dealing urgently with the finances of the Council so it moves on from surviving to thriving. But I want this County Council to be an authority that really cares about its residents, listens to its residents and explains to its residents what it can and cannot do and where we can assist them to help themselves and others. I recognise that we all want our children to be safe, our vulnerable adults to be well cared for, our roads to be well maintained, our schools to be outstanding, our countryside to be protected, the air to be clean and ultimately to ensure that our generation passes on a legacy to the next that they can be proud of. I also know that our residents recognise that there is a cost, a financial cost as well as a human cost, to achieving those aspirations. As an administration, we are working hard to address the historic shortcomings in our children's services area, and we are making some really positive progress. We are tackling the pressures from the increasing demand for adult social care, which is largely a reflection of the demographics across the county. We will be investing more in our highways infrastructure as we try to cope with the volume of traffic that uses the 3,000 miles of roads that we're responsible for on a daily basis. Everything we are now doing is about striving to be the most efficient Council, delivering value for money for our residents and modernising the way in which services are delivered. We are improving how we work and reorganising our workforce to reflect modern-day working practices. It is of course absolutely essential that we explain our plans clearly to our residents, whether that be around increasing the resource we put into the community to look after our vulnerable family members, or redeploying resource within the fire service to enable them to focus on a real prevention agenda. The senior leadership team at Surrey Fire and Rescue are transforming the service to one that is fit for the future, with a determination to stop fires from happening in the first place rather than having to deal with the often very sad consequences. Mr Chairman, we are also custodians of the outstanding areas of natural beauty we all enjoy across the county. Countryside that is owned by our residents and for the use of our residents. That is why we have developed a 25-year strategy, which we will be shortly publishing. This puts the protection of the countryside at the very heart of how it will be managed going forward. However, I completely understand the frustration when people believe we are restricting access by seeking a contribution towards the costs of maintaining the countryside through car park charges. I have already made a commitment, indeed I made this clear as soon as I became Leader, to review those charges through a working group in the autumn when we have a full year's figures. And if we cannot clearly demonstrate to our residents that those parking charges are directly contributing towards the upkeep of the countryside, and I mean clearly demonstrate, then we will review the policy. Dr Povey continues the good work with his group to review the CRCs, and I very much hope they will find a workable solution that ensures the recycling centres remain open as part of the wider proposals we will be considering following the recently published Government Waste and Resources Strategy. We are absolutely committed to supporting recycling, and we must make that as easy as possible, whether that's through increased curbside recycling or the use of a local community recycling centre, whilst recognising that a minority dispose of large amounts of waste at the CRC rather than pay to have it removed commercially. It was to stop that sort of behaviour that the charges were introduced. As a County Council, we are clear about our responsibility to the environment, and that is why I will be asking the Chair of the Select Committee to consider setting up a working group alongside the Cabinet to develop an environmental charter to include climate change issues. This group should also review the causes of traffic congestion, which we know has a significant impact on air quality. I am sure that they will want to engage extensively with external organisations as they build up a deliverable charter. Let's see what we can achieve together to make a positive impact in this area. Mr Chairman, our committee process is a vital component of our structure, and I'm therefore grateful to the cross-party working group that have carried out a review of our scrutiny function. The new structure gives every Member of this Council the opportunity to make a full and meaningful contribution to the policies and strategies that we pursue, and I very much hope that it will be embraced across the chamber as a transparent and effective critical friend. Let's use the talent within this organisation to find better, more effective and more efficient ways of doing things. As we move forward with increasing confidence around the future financial stability of this organisation, we will have choices. Choices on what we invest in and choices on what we expect our residents to pay for. Over the coming weeks, we will carry out a comprehensive review of the charges and services that we provide to all council taxpayers, and we'll listen to feedback from local people. Mr Chairman, I propose to make one change to the Cabinet at this stage. Joining the Cabinet will be Dr Zully Grant-Duff, who replaces Charlotte Morley. Dr Grant-Duff will be particularly focusing on the rollout of the IT, digital and agile working transformation programmes. We must and will invest in our staff and give them the tools they need to do an excellent job. Charlotte has made a significant contribution to the Cabinet over the past 12 months, and I'm very grateful to her for her support. There will also be some changes to the role of the Deputy Cabinet Members. Alison Griffiths will now be working with me in delivering our Surrey-wide health strategy and progressing the integration of this Council with Surrey Heartlands. Cameron MacIntosh will work alongside Julie Isles in delivering the hugely important transformation of the way we support those with special education needs and disabilities. Wyatt Ramsdale will assist in embedding the restructure of Orbis and working with our partners East Sussex County Council and Brighton Hove. Natalie Bramall will ensure we progress the implementation of our asset and place strategy, which was approved at last month's Cabinet meeting. This will centre on significantly reducing our operational estate to reduce costs as well as generate income through capital receipts. In relation to the County Hall project, our commitment to be closer to our residents, planning work is ongoing to relocate around 1,000 staff members to existing buildings within the county, whilst maintaining 300 or so in a small civic heart in either Guildford or Woking. There will be a detailed analysis and options report to Cabinet in July, setting out both the financial benefits and total costs. Finally, Mr Chairman, I would like to thank my group and the Council for re-electing me as Leader. It is without doubt a demanding role, but also a great privilege. I will continue to drive forward our agenda of improving the delivery of our services, improving outcomes for residents and delivering our ambition to make Surrey County Council an organisation that its elected members, its workforce and our residents can be justifiably proud of. Thank you.
I call Mr Darby.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Tim Oliver for his kind words. I'm not sure I recognise his reference to lawyer, but I think I get the gist of it. Thank you also to Nick Harrison for his leadership of our group over a number of years and passing on the baton to me, and also very much again welcome to Nikki Barton as the new Member of the Council. Main issues, as far as I'm concerned, resident experience, which speaks to itself, collaboration, and that very much means our group wishing to work with all members to make a better Surrey. And thirdly, working together with partners, and in this particular context, I include especially central government, because it seems to me that with many local authorities they have lost confidence in central government, and that needs to be restored very swiftly. Clearly, there have been a number of issues in which we need to make financial progress, in fact over the whole Council spend. One can perhaps query how we got there, but we need to move forward. Children's Services and Fire and Rescue were deemed inadequate relatively recently, but there has undoubtedly been excellent progress in both areas, which is extremely welcome. It's not just about saving money, but to provide a better service for the residents of Surrey. Early help very definitely is the right way forward. We need to be straight with our residents, however, to make sure they understand what we are doing and why. We still have concerns about youth centres, libraries, bus subsidies and perhaps children's centres, but again, we understand and appreciate that there is a difficult balance. We're not necessarily always going to agree, but we will undoubtedly wish to contribute and to contribute thoroughly in working with you. We would appreciate even more transparency, even more detail and earlier information in relation to transformation. The scrutiny changes are an excellent example, and I very much welcome the initiative put forward by the Leader and the cross-party discussions, which were hugely beneficial and for which I would very much thank John O'Reilly. It shows what can be achieved when we all work together. My experience over the last two years with the Adults and Health Select Committees has been excellent, working with members from all sides of the chamber, and again, that shows what can be done, additionally my involvement on the property side and with the newly constituted Financial Group. It doesn't all have to be party politics, we're working for the benefit of Surrey residents and we have therefore very, very much in common. There are three particular issues which I'd now wish to cover. I welcome the Leader's Statement in relation to climate change, but firstly highways. Very clearly, however much money we put into highways, we Surrey County Council do not have enough. Our highways are in a poor state, current funding is inadequate from central government, and there seems to me no prospect of long-term improvement. Radical change is needed. So my question to all of us is why are we in the UK paying £60 billion and rising for the prospect of HS2 and not voicing concerns and requiring a very significant rethink over that money? In the last few weeks in the press, there have been various references to that. If it's £60 billion for HS2, it's apparently nine or 10 billion to deal with all the highways in the UK. That's a very small proportion of that money, and it seems to me desperately needed, because we are not going to improve things otherwise. It's equivalent, as far as I can see, of trying to build a new conservatory when we have a roof leaking like a sieve. Clearly, we wouldn't be doing that in our own homes, so why on earth should we be doing it?
Mr Darby, I will indulge you as it's your first speech, but do come to a conclusion now. Thank you.
Mental health. Surrey's spending is the least of all counties, less than half the highest-spending county. It's not directly Surrey's responsibility, but an essential subject for continuing scrutiny. In relation to Heathrow, again, it's not our responsibility, but it's not just the Third Runway, but with intended flight increases, flight paths changed, we need to look very carefully at pollution, at air quality and noise. Transport has been ignored in the past, suggestion is that we have previously been duped. The difficulty with this is that once these proposals are implemented, they will never change and we will be lumbered. I will sum up there, finish where I started, resident experience, collaboration and working together with partners. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Darby. Mr Button? The most dispiriting news I heard last week, to which Mr Darby has already referred, is that Surrey Heartlands Commissioners spend the lowest sum of money per capita on their population in support of mental health services. In my view, there is a In my view, there is a mental health emergency. In our integration plans with Surrey Hartlands, let us be absolutely clear. This is not integration at any price. This is not integration at no price. This is integration on the basis that we must demonstrate some moral commitment, some genuine leadership and share with them our outrage at this poor provision for the most vulnerable in our society. That is not the only emergency, Chairman. There is a climate emergency and a working group won't make that go away. A working group might make us take it more seriously. And again, this is an example of where Surrey County Council must demonstrate its leadership, its moral commitment and its energy for the benefit of all our residents. I welcome what the Leader said about reviewing our CRC policy and our rural car park policy. I was struck by a story that was relayed to me last evening of a gentleman at the Caterham CRC who turned up with a broken broomstick and was told that because it was wood waste, he had to drive it six miles to the Earlswood CRC. This gentleman was as broken by that news as his broomstick was because of its palpable absurdity. We cannot carry moral authority in this county or in this region if we make such basic errors which make us look stupid. Chairman, I understand the progress made in special needs and I welcome it hugely. I welcome our improvements in children's services. I keep a watchful brief on the work done for our fire and rescue services, impressed as I am by the leadership that is being demonstrated there. But if this council is to demonstrate moral commitment, moral leadership, it needs to have the credentials with our partners, with our public partners, to demonstrate that superiority. Can I just say, can this be the last council meeting when we find an Ombudsman's Report critical of the way in which a family have been treated over the children's special needs? Let that be the last. Let this be a beacon. Let's go forward positive, angry and impatient to make things better.
Thank you, Mr Button. Mr Benison.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to make this statement to members, but I cancelled it because I might be able to do it here. I'm asking the Leader whether he would agree with me or at least help me. And he has a little bit in the past. I'm finding it difficult with vulnerable adults. I have several cases and I have one which is absolutely tear-breaking when on it. Sinead Mooney is meeting me next week along with another lady later in the week called Samantha, which you won't go into. The problem I have is that as a normal councillor, I do not have the knowledge in all spheres. There are certain spheres that I can sort out with the roads and streetlights and mechanical things. But anything that breathes or bleeds, I really breaks my heart, but I'm not very good at being able to help. I'm asking the Leader. I particularly have one lady who is having a real problem with cross-agency. It's all very well getting wonderful help, which I'm expecting to have next week. But these people often fall between cross-agency, anything between cross-agency and cross-borough and county councillors. And what I'm really asking on it is that these people should not fall between the cracks. We could be helped if there is a central point, and I do mean central point, other than the wonderful Cabinet and all the other people who can help in the way around. It's taken me months and months and months to try and get what I think is the right help coming out of this. Can you, the Leader, please try and find a central focal point where we can help these really vulnerable adults?
Mr Spence.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to welcome the thrust of the Leader's statement. The direction is changing and that's terrific. And it's part of the work that he has done. But I can also see Colin Kemp there behind the arrows working away. And I would welcome a number of the things. I particularly would welcome his acknowledgement of the work of Nick Harrison and the work of Nick Darby. I wasn't aware of the rule that you could only be the Leader of the Residence Group if you were called Nick. But given that that seems to be the case, it's welcome that our 11th councillor over here, recently elected, is Nicky. I hope that she will be able to be considered. And for anyone thinking of coming across, Deep Pole name-changing is still available. So the other thing I'd like to acknowledge is the presence here today of the Extinction Rebellion people and it's their flower I'm wearing. And again, I see between Colin and Tim, there's a flower there, a rose between. Well, I'm not sure what it is. But you may not agree with everything they superglue themselves to, but the general direction of what they're trying to get to our attention and the urgency of it is extremely important. And again, I welcome the comments on the environment included in the Leader's statement. On the issue of working cooperatively together, as we know, there have just been elections in the borough. Farnham residents has gone up from six councillors to 15. We are in the process of working cooperatively together. There's a council meeting tonight to decide the administration. And we've offered an executive of all the talents. We have offered seats to all of the groups, including the Conservative group on the executive. Whether or not that will be accepted, we will wait and see. Obviously, they have to consider that. And a couple of days after the election, Andy, myself, Wyatt, were in the room with Jeremy Hunt, working again on the traffic congestion issue in Farnham, constructively trying to get forward. And my very last thing, because I see the light is starting to flick, is on the proportionality document on local committees, it states they don't need to be proportionate, which I understand. But given the very welcome share of chairs and vice-chairs on the select committees, I would also like to see that on the local committees. I think at Waverley now with no overall control, there's certainly an argument for a Chair from the ruling group and a Vice Chair from the opposition. And I would like to see that conversation extended so our cooperation can continue, develop and deepen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr O'Reilly.
Thank you, Chairman. And following a sense from Mr Spence's point, I'd like to warmly congratulate and support what the Leader of the Council had said about the environment and the proposal of a process that will lead to an environmental charter for Surrey. I must not be presumptuous about what may be happening later in the agenda, but I would be more than disappointed if the Select Committee that has responsibility didn't take up the Leader's challenge and really worked hard and vigorously and consistently for a charter that has real meaning and real substance. And in that particular case, may I just ask the Leader whether he agrees with me? And it is early days yet, that a fundamental component of an environmental charter, particularly one that addresses both pollution and traffic congestion, is the future of public transport, the buses in particular. It's, the word transformation, I'm afraid, we use it every day. It's almost losing its power. But in as far as our bus services for the future are concerned, what we really do need is a transformation to make them much more accessible, that people will choose to use public transport rather than their own cars. And that means it has to be reliable and that means it has to be consistent. I wouldn't presume, as I say at this stage, to say what the solution is. But I hope the Leader would agree with me that this is absolutely a very significant and important part of the mix.
Thank you. Mr Essex.
Thank you. I agree that we should not just address the historic shortcomings of our children's services, but that we should coordinate and collaborate, not just for delivering better outcomes for the people we serve today, but that should extend to the people affected by what we do here in Surrey and for future generations. And with that in mind, I welcome, Leader, your commitment to an environmental charter for Surrey. But I think that should explicitly mention climate change in the title. It shouldn't just be something it contains. We should declare that from the rooftops. If we are committed to something, it should be on the title as well as in the substance. And three things. Firstly, I think we should commit within that to make the environment better and to deal with the true scale and urgency of the climate challenge. Secondly, it should not just be a piece of paper. We must match the ambition and leadership which we prepare to write down with our commitment to putting budget against it. Not in next year's budget, but at the time the charter is published, to make sure the action plans follow closely to the publishing of the charter and we start to deliver real radical change now. And finally, I would ask that the working group for this needs to think not just be a small subset of this council, but go beyond the council. And with that in mind, a few of us have been working behind the scenes to set up what we've called the Surrey Climate Change Commission. That brings together the voluntary community, the faith community, the Surrey Chamber of Commerce and academics at Surrey University. It's been launched on June 20 by Professor Chris Rapley, who used to be a member of the International Panel on Climate Change, is now a professor at UCL. And we've invited Mike Goodman to come to this event and join us in this launch to show that Surrey as a council and its commitments in this charter, we believe, should not just be what we do as a council, but it should be a commitment to change Surrey as a whole. Leadership needs to extend beyond these corners, beyond this room, into the whole county in which we represent. And with that, I'd like to ask you two questions, Leader, if I may through you, Chair. Firstly, in the new scrutiny structure, can we be clear that every cabinet responsibility is mirrored clearly in words published by the responsibilities in the Select Committee? So for example, there are cabinet responsibilities for protecting the environment and for climate change. That should be explicitly listed, I presume, under the Place Committee. It's not there at the moment. And why not be clear wider? So not just the Environment and Climate Change Charter, but declare that we have a Select Committee for Place, Environment and Climate Change and show that we are prepared to lead, we are prepared to scrutinise and we are prepared to deliver and fund it.
Thank you. And finally, Mr Mansfield.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I welcome the Leader's statements and everything that's included in it. I think that it's clearly a sign here that we're showing our response to our residents by saying that we are reviewing the CRCs and also we're reviewing the car parks as well. Certainly in the villages to which I actually represent the community, there has been suffering with the fly tipping and the increase in fly tipping. So I do welcome those reviews. I agree with the Leader's sentiment that we should not just be a surviving, but a thriving county, and I welcome the way forward.
Thank you, Mr Mansfield. Leader, would you care to respond?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you very much for the questions. I think, I sense quite a lot of agreement in terms of a number of the issues. Particularly grateful to Chris Button and I think to Nick Darby for their support around the work that is being done in children's services and indeed around partnership working. Just on a couple of small points. In relation to highways, Matt Furness, the Cabinet Member responsible for highways, is not only looking at the roads, but also pavements because I think many of us recognise that that is as big an issue for residents as potholes in the middle of the road as well. In relation to mental health, I mean, there has been a lot of discussions with the current provider, as I think Chris Button knows. Later in this agenda, we will be seeking council's approval for the establishment of a committee in common, which is a joint committee of this council and the six CCGs that make up Surrey Hartlands. And that will put this council right at the heart of the decision-making around commissioning. And that is a key part of the work that we're doing with Surrey Hartlands to make sure that we are thoroughly involved in the appointment and the monitoring of performance of providers. I think in relation to Mike Benison's question, I think Sinead Mooney is well briefed on that issue. You and I have had discussions. I hope that from your meeting next week that we'll find a way forward. On Stephen Spence's point, you know, not just giving credit to Colin Kemp for everything that goes on it, which is completely understandable. But in relation to your point, I understand your point around the local committees. At the end of the day, the local committee is an appointment, is a committee of this council rather than a committee of the district and borough councils. Can I suggest so? If you want to address that issue going forward, you look at the creation of a joint committee because those were intended to rotate the chairmanship of the committee between the district and borough and the county. So I think that would be a good way forward. And the work that Mary Angel did last year will help you if you're not familiar with it. I think, you know, the main topic for today is around environmental and climate change. It is coincidental, I would say. I wrote my speech last week. I wasn't aware that we were going to have many people in the public gallery. I completely, and I have spoken with them this morning. And for me, this is about signing up and committing to things that this council can deliver itself or can persuade others to deliver. There is no point us using empty words simply to declare something that we just can't do anything about. So I very much hope that the Chair of the Select Committee, I think the name of the Select Committee is going to be proposed as changed from Place. But, and I'm very happy if he, whoever it is or she that's appointed, is happy that you change the name of the working group to make it more descriptive in terms of what it's going to do. But it very much needs to look across the piece around environmental and climate issues. And, you know, and maybe it will be small beginnings, but to actually have a charter that we can, you know, we can all sign up to, that will have specific things that all of us can do and things that we can encourage others to do. You know, and that will include looking at carbon neutral issues and timescales for that. But I very much hope that this won't be an insular committee, that it will engage actively, whether with the organisation that Jonathan Essex mentioned or other organisations outside. So we get some proper sort of expert advice on all of this. Because, you know, this isn't just to say about empty words. It's about actually having, I think, what you asked for, which is, you know, not just a piece of paper, but a proper action plan and obviously some budget to go with that. I think your last point, Mr Essex, was in relation to the new scrutiny structure. It is certainly the intention that the scrutiny committee scrutinises every aspect of what the Cabinet do. So if that isn't clear when you look at, and I'm not sure whether it's published here, but yes, I think the portfolios are here. If it isn't clear which scrutiny committee has the responsibility for scrutinising a particular aspect of the Cabinet's work, then we will make sure that it is. And to an extent, we've tried also to match the executive team's responsibilities as well across that. So I think, Mr Chairman, I think that hopefully picks up most of the points. You know, there is a lot of work to do here. You know, we are a listening council. We have, as I've mentioned, we will look at some of the issues that we know that irritate our residents. We are here at their behest and we must remember that. We are elected to do that. And of course, that doesn't always mean bowing to a vocal minority. But increasingly, that vocal minority speaks for the majority, so we must respect that.
Don't spoil an excellent debate by interfering with our meeting. Please, could you desist? Otherwise, I will have to get the police to remove you. And I do not want to do that. We've had an excellent debate. Please, desist straight away. Gentlemen, could you remove? Item eight. Item eight. County councillor, Nicky Barton, for the Hazlemere Division at the by-election held on 2nd May 2019.
Chairman, I can confirm that Nicky Barton was duly elected as the county councillor for the Hazlemere Division on the 2nd of May.
Nicky, welcome back personally from me, it's good to see you. Item nine, changes to the county council's overview and scrutiny function. I call Tim Oliver, leader of the council, to introduce this report, and the recommendation's on page 32 of your agenda.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So, as mentioned earlier, following a cross-party working group, and I'm very grateful to all of the members of that, I believe they've come up with some very, very workable and sensible proposals. So the key changes are a reduction of the number of select committees from six to four, which brings it in line actually with a lot of other local authorities. There's an enhanced role for both the chairman and the vice-chairman's group, which Chris Button is going to chair, and that group will oversee the strategic direction of the scrutiny committees. We've increased the number of, they have suggested an increase in the number of vice-chairmen from four to eight, which gives the opposition parties a vice-chair of each of those scrutiny committees, which I think is a very good suggestion. The idea is that those vice-chairmen will then chair a working group. I think we would expect to see two working groups at any one time for each of the scrutiny committees, so up to eight working groups. And we've already started to identify some areas where those, that they could look at. I think, in fact, as it happens, there was some guidance from government after we published ours the last week or so, but reinforced actually that what we were doing was the right thing to do. And also, you know, described it as, scrutiny committees as critical friends. So, you know, this is, I hope, will be constructive, but, you know, also must genuinely scrutinise and suggest. And of course, you know, to get involved in the formation, assisting us in the formation of policies and strategies. I mean, I think to Nick Darby's earlier point around the transparency of the transformation programmes, I hope that, you know, those are available to all members. Indeed, very shortly, there will be released one, a two-side summary of each of the transformation plans. So it will show you at a glance what those plans are doing, are intended to do, the financial impacts of those and so on. So they're a very readable summary, which will give you some guidance, I think, as to other areas you might want to look at in more detail. We've enlarged the membership, to Stephen Spencer's point earlier at least, in relation to this. We have looked and we have made available, we'll make available additional seats so that each member of the ones to sit on the select committees from the opposition groups can do so, because, you know, although political proportionality has to guarantee a minimum and doesn't impose a maximum, so there'll be some co-opter members on those groups. And finally, Mr Chairman, I hope that, you know, this is, you know, this is intended to provide a much more robust and more effective structure, and I think, I think we've got the makings absolutely of that happening.
Thank you, Leader. Before I move to the recommendation, I understand that Mr O'Reilly would like to propose a change to the name of the Place Select Committee. Mr O'Reilly?
Thank you, Chairman, very much indeed, and you took the words right out of my mouth. And I do wish to propose amendment, having supported everything that councillor Oliver has just said. The name Place may mean a lot to us. We all know it's an inside, what they call it, inside-the-beltway phrase, but for outside our residents, it is almost unintelligible. Is it your place or my place? Or place and chips? It doesn't really communicate anything meaningful to the people we are representing and for whom we're here to serve. So, Chairman, you know, the great brains trust of a few of us, we won't win any prizes for originality, but I'm suggesting to the council that the name of the committee be changed to Communities, Environment and Highways, which does cover all of the responsibilities of the committee, there's a lot more beside that, but it brings into sharp focus those areas that do matter to our residents, who we are, as Tim Oliver has just said, we are wanting to communicate with and bring in to our deliberation. So I hope that suggestion, that it be Communities, Environment and Highways, will command the support of the council.
And Mr O'Reilly, do you have a second to this motion?
Mr Chairman, I'd like to second that.
Thank you. Right, I'll open the matter for debate, if any. Mr Harrison?
Chairman, I don't really want to discuss the matter of the amendment, but perhaps the heart of it. When this was mooted some months ago, I must admit my heart sank. This is probably the, I don't know how many changes we've had in the scrutiny arrangements, and yet a further change I saw coming. Now, I think it's helpful to have a fewer number of places on these committees, certainly, I think, hopefully, they will be filled by enthusiastic members of the majority party. I do appreciate the flexibility shown by John's leadership of the group and Tim Oliver, and it did strike me that the ability to have two, to have two members of opposition, each of the opposition groups, on the 12-person committee was a huge advantage, so that our individual members didn't feel isolated there. I think the two vice-chairmen is a good innovation. We've heard today from the Leader and the comment on his statement that there's much to be done, buses, the environment, highways, et cetera. So there's a lot to be done, and I think it's important that those vice-chairmen do take on these roles of leading task groups. One note of hesitation would be on the question of resources from Democratic Services. And we did have some support from the Leader when we had our final discussions on that, which I hope can be implemented by Democratic Services as a whole. It is vital that we get that support. I'm not suggesting that Democratic Services need to be at every meeting, I would encourage the task groups we're talking about to move out into the county, speak with residents, speak with officers. I'm not sure we absolutely on every occasion need a member of the Democratic Services function, but I think in terms of holding a decent number of meetings every year, be that five or six, and supporting generally what's going on is absolutely vital. This won't work unless we get adequate support, and I'm looking forward to receiving that from the officers and the Leader. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Harrison. So I just want to confirm that we all agree the Communities, Environment and Highways Select Committee, new name, is that it? We don't agree? Okay, then I'll continue the debate. Mrs Hammond?
I really, I really hate making decisions on the hoof. Communities is a much wider role than the environment. The environment is exactly what you're talking about when you talk about highways, waste, fire rescue service. Communities creates a different sort of feel to that. So I would really have difficulty in including communities, which is not necessarily about place, it's about the people within a place. And so I really have some difficulty with that word, communities, in this group, and I really do think that being asked to change something on the hoof at a meeting like this is inappropriate. I rest my case, if the majority wish to go with it, then so be it. But I really feel very strongly that this should have further consideration than the back of a cigarette packet or whatever, decision about, or what shall we call it instead. I rest my case.
Thank you, Mr Witham.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak, but in view of those comments, I would normally agree that making important decisions on the hoof at meetings like this would not be appropriate, but I entirely support the suggestion that has been put forward by councillor O'Reilly. I don't think it's a really big deal. I think changing the name from Place to the three words simply makes it more understandable to our residents and what the purpose, the main purposes, not every single responsibility, but the main purposes of this new Select Committee will be. I think it's a better description than Place, which frankly, I don't understand, so why with the residents?
Thank you, Mrs Witham. Mr Button?
I have to say, Chairman, I'm agnostic on the name of the committee. What matters to me is that scrutiny and transparency are two sides of the same coin. I hugely welcome the change in tone in these meetings and in the conduct of our business. As the Leader has very kindly said, I will be chairing the chairs and vice-chairman's group, and I will be making sure through that body that we all collectively share an understanding of what scrutiny is and deliver the level of transparency that we require for our residents. The balance of power between the cabinet and the Leader and the scrutiny committees has been redressed, and I think we should celebrate this significant step towards transparency. So I personally thank the Leader for his initiative, I thank Mr councillor O'Brien for his leadership in suggesting the all-party working group. It was a pleasure to participate in it, and I do believe now we have a firm and proper basis on which to continue our business.
Thank you, Mr Button. Mr Hussein, would you like to speak, are there no other speakers? If not...
Thank you, Chairman. It is just, Place didn't mean really anything, and with the Communities, Environment, at least residents can relate to it, that's all it was. It wasn't nothing concealed on there, so I hope that...
So, I will put this to the vote. Are there all those, please, all those in favour, plus yes, and raise your hand? Thank you. All those against? Thank you. So we have 51 yes, two no, and eight abstentions, so that is carried, so we do have a new name for the committee. The committee is the Communities, Environment and Highways Select Committee. Now, let us hope we have a bit more substantive debate on the remainder of item nine. If not, we will move to the recommendation. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 10, the annual review of the political proportionality, on page 35 of the agenda. I call the chief executive to introduce the report.
Mr Chairman, this sets out for approval, the annual proportionality, there is a simple recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Leader?
Sorry, Chairman, can I just point out this, on this paper, on Annex 1, on the second page, it refers to the Select Committee's performance and resources, whereas it should be resources and performance.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't see any comments, so are we agreed for the recommendation on page 35 of the agenda?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 11, amendments to the council's constitution. I call Tim Oliver to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. There are a number of things here that this report picks up. So firstly, it's to reflect the changes with the Community Transport and Environment Directorate, so to look at specific delegations to offices relating to planning, flooding and drainage, and those have been updated in the annex. I did make a decision the other day in relation to the government structure around assets and investment. So historically, we have had three boards, shareholder board, the investment board and the asset strategy board, and some of that work has overlapped, some of it has become confusing. So we have now, or the proposal is to form one single board, the Strategic Investment Board, that will pick up all of those issues, and it will be a public committee as well, so there will be a published agenda and dates for those meetings, and the terms of reference are also attached. And then, thirdly, as I mentioned earlier, the proposal is to set up a committee in common with the six CCGs, but to make that workable and to make the decision-making workable, the proposal is to have effectively a subcommittee of the three cabinet, the three relevant cabinet members that, who will participate in those meetings and will have delegated authority to take decisions on behalf of the cabinet. And then, I think the last bit was to do with the, then obviously, Article 7, you've got the scrutiny function, the terms of reference for the select committees.
Thank you, Leader. Dr Povey?
Chairman, just with those two new bodies, the Leaders just confirmed the Strategic Investment Board will meet in public. I just wonder whether that same applies to the Committees in Common Subcommittee, which must be the most abstruse name of a committee I've ever heard, and maybe one that perhaps would be worthwhile explaining to members of the public what on earth it is. I understand what it is, but will that be open to the public? Will it be subject to scrutiny, the same as all the other committees?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, navigating your way around the infrastructure of the NHS is a challenge to all of us, and as we all know, unless it has a three-letter acronym, it has no place in the NHS system. There will be obviously private meetings as well of the Committee in Common, but the decision-making will be made in public.
Thank you, Mr Essex.
Thank you. As the Strategic Investment Board is a public meeting solely comprised of the ruling party, will it be subject to scrutiny? If so, under which Select Committee?
If there are no other questions, I will invite the Leader to wrap up. Thank you, and answer that question.
It's a very good point, but I'm assuming that it will be scrutinised by the Resources and Performance Subcommittee, as it will, Select Committee, as it will relate to financial matters, and obviously, orders and governance also have a role to play in them.
Thank you, Leader. So the recommendation is on page 38 of your agenda. Are we agreed? Copies of which have been circulated in the supplementary agenda of yesterday. Thank you. I call any questions? Then we can move to the agreement. All those in favour, please show. Do apologise, it keeps going off. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen. Item 13, the election of committee chairman and vice-chairman. Please refer to the nominations, copies of which have been tabled today. Members, as the chairmanship of Epsom and Yewell Local Committee is contested, we will need to take a vote to confirm this appointment, and voting will be by show of hands. The candidates are Mr Beckett and Mrs Mountain. So may I call, first of all, all votes for Mr Beckett? Please raise your hand and press your button. No, don't worry about the button, actually, just yes or no. Thank you, and then all hands up for Mrs Mountain, if you wish her. Thank you. So those in favour of Mrs Mountain, 48, 14 for Mr Beckett, so I declare that Mrs Mountain is elected chairman of the Epsom and Yewell Local Committee. Now, I call the recommendations included at the end of the circulated papers to elect chairman and vice-chairman of Committees of the council for the council year 2019-20. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 14, Members' Question Time, page 13 of the supplementary agenda. Notice of four questions, five minutes per question for supplementaries. These must be framed as questions, please, not statements, and be relevant to the original question. question. Question time will be limited to 45 minutes, at which point I will finish the question we are on and close the item. So, the first question, please. Do you have a supplementary, Mr Keaton?
I thank the cabinet member for highways for his detailed response. However, can he confirm my understanding of that detailed response, that none of the local highway funding is allocated currently on the basis of road usage? And will he agree to introduce that criteria into the formula for local highway funding allocations in the next financial year? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr Furness, if you'd reply.
Thank you, Chairman, and I thank the member. As we have yet to have a full year, I think it would be a good idea for us to actually monitor after the full year of operation, how it has worked. I am pleased to say that each local committee has been given a core amount of funding. Epsom and Yule have got a significant, almost £200,000 worth of funding as well, so I hope that your local committee spends it wisely. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Furness. Question two, Mr Evans, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much, Chair, and can I thank the cabinet member for his response, and indeed refer to the Leader who made remarks earlier on about this. I wonder whether I can ask if the cabinet member would be prepared to meet me in my electoral division to see the state of pavements, which I'm not suggesting is necessarily any worse than anywhere else, but I'm sure, like other members here, I spent many weeks pounding the streets in the local elections, and this year, one of our candidates was disabled and in a wheelchair, and it really was an eye-opener to me to see the enormous challenges that we had to face with a wheelchair, going around the pavements, walking in the road, not just because of the state of the pavements, but the people who were parked, two wheels on the curb, and it would have been exactly the, is he aware that it would have been, let's make it a question, is he aware that it would have been exactly the same challenge had it been somebody with a pushchair, or an elderly person, or somebody who was disabled by walking? It really is extraordinarily difficult, and I think it's a worry, and I'm not suggesting this just discards it, but does he actually feel the system as outlined is working, and such would he prepare to meet me so I can show him in some detail the real challenges that particularly disabled people will face? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Mr Evans. Mr Essex.
Thank you. And assuming such a review takes place and the system might be under review in some way, the reply to this question talks about informing the Pavement Horizon Programme, but what that generally does is leads to large lengths of pavement for whole roads to be done, whereas some of the worst parts are maybe only 10 or 15 metres long. I wonder if the cabinet member would agree with me that such a review should include not just reviewing the process, but also the funding allocation? So maybe more might go to a local structural repair of small patches of pavement, so we might more cost-effectively target the worst spaces, rather than doing whole roads of pavement, where there are blighted areas which may not constitute a whole road of improvement but might really benefit residents.
Thank you, Mr Essex. Mrs Lake.
Thank you, Chairman. I think many of you know that I've spent the last six, seven weeks in a wheelchair, and I would wholly support this initiative of pavements. We all had problems with pavements. We talk about patching and we talk about holes. That's not what I actually have had a problem with. I've had a problem with the pavements being at such a strong angle that the carer pushing my pushchair comes out being hurt after any distance. Fortunately, we didn't go too far, but it's the angle of the pavements. Many pavements which are in excellent condition and some almost brand-new are laid at such an angle for the water to run off. If you're using them, it's extremely difficult to navigate on the angle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lake. Mr Furness, a few questions for you to answer.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Firstly, yes, I am happy to come to your division, meet with you. I'll bring the local highways manager as well to look at the specific areas, and that is actually an open invitation to all members. If you would like me to come, I'm very happy to, as councillor Kemp did before. We're very keen on visiting all areas of Surrey. I would just like to add that we actually have 13 reconstruction schemes planned for footway programme this year, which equates to six and a half kilometres, and we have just under 80 preventative maintenance schemes for an additional 40 kilometres for aesthetically impaired or little functional impairments, so we can deal with that in a preventative manner. Mr Essex, you are able to use your allocation for pieces of 10, 15 metres in particular for pavement reconstruction. What I am happy to do, though, is if there are specific sections, we can have a discussion, we can talk to your local highways manager as well, to see how we can use your allocation to supplement the work by the local committee. And just very lastly, as the Leader has said, that pavements are particularly important, we do need to make them accessible and usable. This, our cycleway improvements as well, is all part of our sustainable transport mode. We need to encourage more people to use these, which in turn helps the environment going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Question three, Mr Bottom, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman. I thank the cabinet member for her helpful response. I know that she's aware that I was alert to have read of this change through a newsletter sent to the voluntary sector. Therefore, would the Leader consider using an initiative such as other boroughs and districts use from time to time, which is a delegated action list, which is sent to members explaining urgent items which senior officers have had to make a decision on, together with a brief rationale, and together with any note of how the decision might be challenged or who might be questioned upon it? The sudden change of the Section 75 status was significant, and it was irksome to have received it in a newsletter.
Mrs Mooney?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd like to thank councillor Bottom for his question and his additional question here, supplementary question. You may be aware that we already publish a notice of key decisions taken under delegated authority by officers. However, in light of councillor Bottom's question and very well-made point, I have asked for Democratic Services to arrange for an email notification to be sent to all members, ensuring that you are advised of decisions such as these at the very earliest opportunity. In addition, councillor Bottom and myself and councillor Darby will be meeting on a monthly basis, where we will be discussing and updating each other on adult social care and health matters. I believe that these meetings will be very productive, and I know from sitting on a task group and working with councillor Darby in the past, that he will actively participate in this, as will councillor Bottom. I very much look forward to those regular meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Mooney. Question four, a second question for Mr Evans, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much, Chair. Can I thank councillor Goodman, I didn't know he'd been moved further away from the seat of power. Can I welcome the fact that Surrey is doing a study and that's going to have results later on this year? But the particular study that I referred to also drew attention to the fact that children have been identified as the group most likely to be affected by exposure to fine particular matter, which has been linked to respiratory diseases and is believed to shorten lifespan. Now, this will vary, colleagues from around the county, from the different parts you represent, but many Surrey children, I suspect, will be, particularly those perhaps near the M3, the M25, the airports, or wherever it is, will attend schools where level of nitrogen dioxide, another roadside air pollutant, will also exceed the EU's legal limit. I know, and I'm very conscious that our relationship with the EU and EU limits is under some discussion at the moment, but I hope that we will continue to try and maintain the very highest possible standards for Surrey in the years and months and years ahead, and I look to the cabinet member to support me in this initiative. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the question and the supplementary. Children's health, adults' health is so important to us, and that's why I was very pleased that we were able to secure money to fund some of the education of children in schools. In fact, we educated 50 primary schools in the course of last year, which will finish in July. I'm also pleased that on the 20th of June, we are doing the anti-idling campaign in five schools, to which Buckland's and Ashford Primary are in spellform area. We are very committed to this, and when I reread the answer I gave you to your question, I read that we're going to relook at the benefits and what we've learnt from this work in the Health and Wellbeing Board in December. I think that's wrong, and I spoke to the Leader this morning, we've agreed that it will be on the agenda in September, because it's no good, in my view, to have one campaign. We need to continue this for the next few years, because it's so important to get the health of our children right. And I totally agree with you, the particulates N02 does affect it, children in particular, and we're doing all we can in this council to look at that.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. Moving to item 15, statements by members. I've received notice of a statement from one member, Mrs Tina Mountain. I call Mrs Mountain to make a statement of two minutes maximum without further discussion or write a reply. Mrs Mountain.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, we've heard this morning about changes in the fire service, and I hope you will join me in praising our fire service. We so often take their incredible work for granted. Epsom Fire Station is in my district, and sadly, on the last weekend of April, there was a fire just outside Stonely. Fire engines reached the scene within seven minutes where the fires were escalating. Six properties were involved, but happily, all residents had left the buildings. The duty strategic commander has made special mention of Epsom and Yule, whilst, and I quote, whilst obviously the property damage has been devastating to our residents and to those who have been affected, as part of our multi-agency working, it was good to see the early intervention attendance of Epsom and Yule emergency planning teams, who were quickly able to set up the aftercare and support alongside our Red Cross colleagues for those residents who really made a significant difference during this stressful time. Mr Chairman, this very sad event shows that the transformation strategy is working, and that it is our job to ensure our residents and some borough councils understand that it is not conservative cuts that is affecting change, as this was alleged on Twitter, but a new way of working that will secure the safety of our residents for the future. As the saying goes, prevention is better than cure. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Mountain. Item 16, delivering the community vision for Surrey in 2030, working with partners and residents, page 53 of the agenda. I call Tim Oliver to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This partnership commitment follows on from the extensive engagement we had with the voluntary charities from the faith sector last summer regarding the creation and formation of the 2030 vision. And it is all about establishing stronger relationships with our partners. As a county council, we need to be a good and effective partner. So we've set out a partnership commitment that underpins, intended to underpin those relationships, and I think there's some very good principles here. You know, at the end of the day, we are all here to serve the people of Surrey, whether it's this county or County Council or the other organisations. So you'll see there the three areas that have been focused on, about being ambitious in our thinking, you know, respecting our partners and their views, empowering everyone in the design of solutions. You know, we recognise that we cannot, you know, design all of those solutions ourselves or deliver all of them, so to do that in partnership. And indeed, it's about building resilience into our communities, so that our residents also are able to take responsibility for things that they can do themselves. And I think finally, it's about being open, it's about being transparent and honest and indeed supportive of each other. So I think, you know, we all recognise that a true partnership is, you know, is the most effective way of delivering things, and we've put in writing here some, just some simple core principles I hope that people will work to.
Then Mrs Lake.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say I fully support this initiative. I think it's everything that we need, but I do also have a concern with it, and I would simply like the Leader's reassurance. The Leader started with the word partnership. When I came here in 1997 first, the word partnership was bandied around, and right across the county, I think it would be fair to say it was given lip service. And I do not mean to insult anyone, but it was when the word partnership was first used, and it was overused and overused, to such a degree that districts and boroughs and the voluntary sector were beginning to think that we at Surrey County Council weren't listening. It took quite some time with members at that time to work out what was called the Surrey Compact, a respectful way where we wrote down a document which said how we would work with the voluntary sector. And over the years, the district and boroughs signed up to it, the voluntary sector signed up to it, there was the NHS signed up across the county, and many businesses did. In no way in this new partnership and vision for the future do I see the Surrey Compact mentioned. Now, this was a very valuable compact between and cross-cutting in Surrey. And though I see that we're calling it a vision for Surrey, I would like to know, are we turning our back on the compact? Has it been ingrained within the compact, so I don't have to be concerned? But in no way, nowhere in this vision, has the Surrey Compact been mentioned that I can find. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Keaton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I note the reference to positive relationships and working with partners and collaborating is needed to ensure success. I think at Surrey County Council, we have to recognise that other councils have different ways of working, that their constitutions enshrined in statute are for them alone to determine, and acting in a way to suggest interference in those councils is both self-defeating and damaging to those constructive partnerships. I trust the leadership of this council understands that.
Thank you, Mr Keaton. Leader, would you like to respond?
Well, I'll respond to Mrs Lake's point, which is, I'm afraid I'm not that familiar with Surrey Compact, so we will take that away and have a look.
Thank you, Leader. So the recommendation is that we endorse and approve the partnership commitment and support its promotion across the county? Are we agreed? Thank you. Item 17, the appointment of a Section 151 officer, on page 59 of the agenda. I call the Leader to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is an appointment of Lee Whitehouse as the Executive Director for Resources and our Section 151 officer. Lee has a hugely impressive CV, well-experienced in local government and other areas, and of course, has been our interim Finance Officer, now Executive Director of Resources for the past few months, and I think those of us that have worked with him know the expertise and the skills that he will bring to this role at a much-needed time.
Thank you, Leader. So the recommendation is Lee Whitehouse is appointed Executive Director and Section 151 Officer of Surrey County Council. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item 18, Report of the Cabinet, on page 61 of the agenda. I call the Leader to present the reports of the meetings of the Cabinet held on 26 March and 30 April 2019. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I beg to move the reports of the Cabinet held on 26 March 2019 and the 30 April 2019.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any paragraphs A, B, C and D? If not, are we agreed? Oh, sorry, somebody said that. Thank you. Item 19, the Cabinet Minutes, page 95 of the agenda. No notification of a question on the Minutes has been agreed, so thank you, colleagues, and the meeting ends at just after 11:30.